All right, welcome to this afternoon's work session. Appreciate everyone being in attendance.
Recording in progress.
Our first item for discussion is if any board member would like to speak on any of the preliminary items for November 16th Board meeting. All right, hearing none, then we'll have our first presentation from Magistrate Court Chief Judge Keisha Wright Hill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Keisha Wright Hill and I serve as your Chief Magistrate Judge. Clayton County Magistrate Court is a major part of not only our criminal justice system, but Clayton County as a whole. As Chief Judge, I felt imperative that the Board of Commissioners understand all the duties and responsibilities of the magistrate court. By the conclusion of my presentation, you should have a better understanding of the important role magistrate court plays in Clayton County. When you understand what we do, it's easier to understand what is necessary for our court to operate as expeditiously and efficiently as possible. The Clayton County Magistrate Court is the fourth busiest magistrate court in the state of Georgia, which means we have an extremely high volume of cases. The court handles over 61,000 cases per year. The magistrate court issues all of the search and arrest warrants in Clayton County, including the jurisdiction of the Hartsfield-Jackson Airport, which we all know is the world's busiest airport. As a result, we must have judges on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year to issue criminal warrants. We are the only court that never closes. Our judges work nights, days, weekends, holidays, to be available whenever an officer calls. The magistrate court bench handles nine different types of court hearings. First appearance hearings, preliminary hearings, bond hearings, pre-issuance hearings, child abandonment hearings, civil motions, civil trials, disposessory hearings, and county ordinance hearings. I'm going to briefly explain the various hearings I've just mentioned, but first I want to give you an analogy given to me by my presiding judge. The magistrate court is to the judicial system what the emergency room is to the hospital. The state court handles all misdemeanor or less serious offenses such as battery, assault, or driving with no license. The Superior Court handles all felonies or more serious offenses such as robbery, aggravated assault, or murder. But all criminal cases must go through the magistrate court prior to being transferred to either state or superior court for trial and sentencing, so you can understand why our volume is so high and why we're so busy. I'll give you an overview of the criminal side of magistrate court and then move to the civil side. After an officer obtains an arrest warrant and arrests the accused, they're brought to our jail. The defendant must be brought before judge within 48 to 72 hours of arrest. This is called their first appearance because it is the first time they are appearing before the court. If the officer has made a warrantless arrest, the defendant's first appearance must occur within 48 hours of arrest. If the arrest was made with a state criminal warrant, the defendant's first appearance must occur within 72 hours of arrest. So you can see how time-sensitive our cases are. If we go outside of these time limits, there is a legal basis to release the defendant. And what we don't want is to put dangerous violent criminals back on the street. So it's imperative that our court operates with a sense of urgency. Due to the seriousness of these time limits, one of the first things that I did when I took office on January 1st was to require first appearance hearings to take place daily. Prior to my order, these hearings were only taking place four times per week, which is insufficient considering our volume of cases. At the first appearance hearing, the defendant is advised of what they're charged with, what the bond is, and if they're given a bond, and when their preliminary hearing will take place. We also hear the preliminary hearings. Preliminary hearings are held to determine whether or not there's sufficient probable cause to proceed further with the case. If probable cause is found, the case will be transferred to state court if it includes only misdemeanor offenses, or superior court if there are any felony offenses. If the judge finds that there is not sufficient probable cause to proceed with the case, the magistrate judge can dismiss the charges at the preliminary hearing. So you can see how powerful the magistrate court really is. We also hear bond hearings. This is an opportunity for defendants to either request a bond if they were initially denied bond at their first appearance, or request a bond reduction or modification. Magistrate Court handles pre-issuance hearings. That's when a private citizen can apply for a warrant against another citizen at the courthouse. Once proper notice is given, a hearing is held, and either the warrant is issued and the accused is immediately taken into custody, or the judge will dismiss the warrant if there is insufficient probable cause. In magistrate court, we hear child abandonment hearings. A custodial parent can apply for a child abandonment warrant against a non-custodial parent if that parent fails to provide support for the party's minor child at least 30 days prior to the filing of the application. Child abandonment hearings are handled similarly to the pre-issuance hearings. Once proper notice is given, a hearing is either held, and either the warrant is issued and the accused is immediately taken into custody, or the judge will dismiss the warrant if there is insufficient probable cause. In magistrate court, we hear child abandonment hearings. A custodial parent can apply for a child abandonment warrant against a non-custodial parent if that parent fails to provide support for the party's minor child at least 30 days prior to the filing of the application. Child abandonment hearings are handled similarly to the pre-issuance hearings. Once proper notice is given, a hearing is either held, and either the warrant is issued and the accused is immediately taken into custody, or the judge will dismiss the warrant if there's insufficient probable cause. So that's an overview of everything that we do in magistrate court on the criminal side. And so now I'll go over briefly the civil side. We hear both civil motions and civil trials. We handle all small claims where the amount of controversy is $15,000 or less. So all of the types of cases that you see on the People's Court, Judge Judy, Judge Mathis, is heard in magistrate court. In addition to all of the areas that I just mentioned, the magistrate court serves in an assisting role to the Superior Court by issuing ex parte orders and conducting 12-month temporary protective orders, or TPOs. The public generally refers to TPOs as restraining orders. When someone needs to obtain a temporary protective order in Clayton County, we have put in place a process where the petitioner can apply online if they have access to a computer, a printer, and scanner. If the applicant does not have this access, they can book a same-day or next business day appointment with our victim advocate for assistance. Our victim advocate has over 25 years of experience working in the legal system and with victims of domestic violence. Once that application is completed and notarized, the application is forwarded to one of our on-call judges, who reviews it and determines if there's probable cause to issue an ex parte order. An ex parte means one side or one party. The accused is served this temporary order to stay away from the petitioner, and both parties are given a court date for the judge to hear from both sides. When the accused is served the TPO by the sheriff, they must immediately leave the residence and are ordered to have no contact with the petitioner. The hearing is usually set in about two weeks, and we currently issue ex parte orders daily from 8:30 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. The next court date that the parties would have would be a 12-month protective or temporary protective order hearing. At that time, either side may be represented by counsel, or they may represent themselves. Evidence may be submitted and considered, witnesses may testify. As long as the accused has been properly served, a hearing is held, and either the TPO is granted, or the judge will dismiss the protective order if there is insufficient probable cause. We hold 12-month hearings three times per week to handle the volume of cases and to stay within statutory time limits, because under the statute, those hearings should be heard within 30 days. Magistrate Court also handles all of the disposessory actions, or eviction actions, in Clayton County. Due to COVID and the previous administration's backlog, we currently have 3,296 open disposessory cases that were filed in 2020, and 2,683 open disposessory cases that were filed in 2021. While I was attending a White House Summit on Eviction Prevention, I was advised by Madam Clerk that we currently have over 60,000 open disposessory cases in our clerk's office. Some of those cases date back to 2005. While many of these cases may be inactive, this number is extremely high. I can't speak as to why prior administrations have not adequately addressed this backlog issue, however, I can say that the current administration will work aggressively to address and resolve the issue. We've already implemented a closed file project to address closing out many of these old cases, but it is a process that will take time and additional staff. Magistrate Court also holds county ordinance hearings. Typically, these are cases that have not been able to be resolved with the code enforcement award, and therefore are transferred to magistrate court for resolution. And last but not least, we conduct weddings. So as you can see, magistrate court handles a lot of various issues on both the criminal and civil side. Due to the national pandemic, our annual departmental summary for 2020 is not reflective of our typical numbers. However, I did bring a summary of the cases that were handled in 2019 by the magistrate court, so that you could see the big picture. And that's my Exhibit A. I've given every person, every commissioner a copy. And if you just look at that, there you go. If you look at the numbers, you'll see, these are, I wasn't in clearly office in 2019, but this is the number of cases that the magistrate court held or handled in 2019. You can see the number of disposessory cases, how many warrants we have issued, first appearance, and preliminary hearings. But that's just to give you an idea of the amount of volume that we handle on a yearly basis. As I said earlier, we are the fourth busiest magistrate court in the state. However, when you compare our bench with the benches of the other metro Atlanta counties, and at this time I'm talking about Cobb, DeKalb, Fulton, and Gwinnett, it's evident that we are understaffed. We are handling the same or larger caseload as our fellow counties, yet we have half the manpower. I presented an Exhibit B, which is a bar graph reflecting the total number of judges full-time and part-time in total in the above referenced counties. A quick glance would show how understaffed we are as relates to our case volume. As you can see, Cobb has 20 judges, DeKalb has 24 judges, Fulton has 29 judges, Gwinnett has 22 judges, and we have nine. We have received federal funding through the American Rescue Plan Act to pay for additional part-time staff to assist with our massive backlog, and we are very appreciative of the federal funds that have been received. We've already begun hiring additional staff. As the court administrator, it's imperative that I am innovative and forward-thinking. And while part-time employees are assisting us with the backlog, we will need additional full-time staff to handle our voluminous caseload moving forward. Hopefully now you have a better understanding of what the magistrate court does on a daily basis for the citizens of Clayton County. Thank you for your time.
For your presentation, in reference to your Exhibit B, I believe you called it, have you taken into consideration the population of each of those four larger counties in relation to the number of judges they have? And if so, then what is a reasonable number of additional judges do you believe you would need?
It's, well, I've looked at the number of cases. And as I said, out of the five, out of the five counties, we are the fourth busiest, which means we have the fourth highest number of cases.
Who are we hiring?
I'm sorry?
Out of the other four, who are we hiring?
Who's number five, you mean?
Yes.
I believe it's Cobb. And so I would surmise, if you'd go by the numbers, that I requested an additional 12 part-time judges, which has to be approved at this point by Superior Court. So hopefully that will take place. And my point is, the federal funds are helpful now, but that's to help the backlog. This, clearly, we've been number four for a minute before COVID hit. So even if we cleared out all of the backlog with our part-time staff and those federal funds in, we're still gonna need additional staff.
Yes, Commissioner Hamburg.
Yeah, Judge, well, or somebody. Who determines how many judges per county?
I'm glad you asked me that. Under the current statute, Superior Court has to approve, I select, but they have to approve the number and approve which judges that I submit to them. So I have already put in this request for them. I'm waiting on a response, but I'm looking to have a local law so that as an elected official and as someone who's in magistrate court every day, it seems as though as the chief judge, I would be the person that would know what my, you know, what's necessary. And so I'm looking to see if the chief magistrate judge would be able to make that determination, because Superior Court doesn't know what's going on in magistrate court, and vice versa in different courts.
How many have you, how many judges have you requested?
12. So the 12 with plus the nine that I have would give us 21.
Is that full-time? These are full-time judges?
That's part-time.
Part-time judges.
Right. They gave me one additional. So I had four, I had three full-time judges, and they approved one additional, one additional full-time judge. But the reason why it's important to bring this to your attention is, it's nice to say, here's an additional judge, but if you don't know the magnitude and the volume that we have, you know, you're not gonna understand when I say 12, that that's not out of the ordinary, when you look at the other counties.
Has this been expressed to the Superior Court?
It has, and I'm just waiting on their response.
I mean, have you verbally?
I've given them a written proposal with all this documentation.
But not a meeting or anything like?
They have, they have to meet, and then if they have any questions, so I have to submit a written proposal to them, which I did.
Okay.
I'm just waiting on response.
Okay. It's court?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just one last thing. Is the court, are your courts, are you open now for business?
We never closed.
Oh, okay.
We, right now, we are virtual. Since I've been in office, we have, everything was not opened back up. Out of our 10 calendars, nine of them are up. The only calendar that we're not running right now is county ordinance, but the rest of them are up and running. But even though they're, it's more efficient for our court to run virtually because we don't have jury trials. So it's much easier, people that may have transportation issues or not able to get off work, it's much easier to use the court virtually. And so that's been very productive, and we can have multiple judges. So I could have a, I have a full-time judge running a disposessory calendar, and I could have a part-time judge run at the same time. So it's efficient for us. So we're open. I have to say that because the Chief Judge Carter wants to make it clear, we're not closed, we're open, but we just handle our courts virtually.
Okay. This is a little bit different, because I'm gonna bring up about the monies that we've received for tenants and landlords and all. I think that's in your court, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are these numbers added in here?
No, usually, usually when I have the platform, I'm always talking about our eviction prevention project. But that's the project that we put in place to try to prevent eviction. And so we distributed the $1 million that the Board of Commissioners gave us in February, and we received another $4 million from the federal government. Out of that 4 million, we've distributed 2.9. So we anticipate distributing the rest of those funds by January.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to get too far off of what you're presenting to us, but I know that that's a problem. That's a backlog, because we've been assisting with some of that. I think Tina was down talking with your person, is that, is that Joy?
Yes, Joy.
Yes, and all, and talk about the backlog and all.
Right.
Are you requesting any additional people, or is that handled with the BOC, COO?
Well, that's handled with the monies we receive from ARPA, as far as additional part-time staff. I can't, I don't have any slots for full-time staff, so I can hire part-time staff, but that's the issue, that we will need additional full-time staff.
The money will run out.
Right.
Okay, well, I just don't want us to be sitting and not really responding to the folk that are?
Oh, no, we, I can tell you, the disposessories are at the top of my list. And so I incorporate, not only are we having settlement conferences in the courthouse, the staff has went out to the apartment complexes for people that don't have transportation, we have went to the Flint River Community Center, we went to the libraries, we are reaching out to the public and meeting them where they are. And I'm also incorporating, or about to start the landlord-tenant mediation, so the landlord-tenants may be able to work things out to, again, to avoid eviction. But disposessories has been at the top of my list since I've entered office.
Okay, I just know some of the calls that we get, people are like?
And I would just say, a lot of the calls, a lot of that is Hartz to Nurish. It's not just the magistrate court. We get, when they, we're trying to stop the evictions, and what's happened is they file, they complete one central application, and then Joy goes in, and if there is an eviction, she sends it to magistrate court. We distribute approximately $125,000 every week. So we're cutting checks to landlords every Monday and Wednesday. The people that have not filed, had an eviction filed, are going through Hartz to Nurish. And so the problem is if Hartz to Nurish doesn't work fast enough, or they're not able to, then the landlord ends up filing an eviction, which now we're doing double work, because we're doing work on the ones that were already filed, plus the ones that Hartz to Nurish wasn't able to distribute monies to. So.
Do you know what those numbers are, as far as how many of those we've received, as far as tenants' evictions, and either landlord requests?
How many that we've kept people from being evicted, or how many?
Both, both.
I know that?
How many have come to us, and how many have actually gotten the service?
I know that we've prevented over 1,200 Clayton County citizens from being evicted.
Since?
February.
Okay.
That's including the county, including the county money and the federal money.
And the backlog now is?
It's still higher.
It's high. But you heard when I said, you heard when I said, when you look at that chart, there's 20,000 some from 2019. And so, right, so we're going as fast as we can, but what people have to understand is, pre-COVID, when we held disposessory court, we had a calendar of 100 people in the morning, 100 people in the afternoon. You know, the hallways are full. This is pre-COVID now. Now we're reduced to Zoom, so we can't have 100 people on Zoom. We can't hear, we can only hear so many cases per hour, per day. So the ones that we can hear, we hear through Zoom, we're sending people through rental assistance, we're trying to do landlord-tenant, and trying to use every avenue possible to try to reduce the backlog. We're going, we're going, I mean, we're still trying to close out some of the 2020s. So people are calling for, that just filed August or September, but we're still trying to close out people that filed November 2020.
Yeah, so some of these people are probably already out on the streets.
True, but that's, I think that's the reason why there's 60,000 cases open in the court, because if someone just, if someone files an eviction and the tenant leaves, our case is still open, which is making these, so there's no other explanation as to why we have open cases from 2005.
So maybe we need to help or something with at least part-time people to help with those?
Well, we've already done that through the ARPA money.
We only have one person, I thought.
No, the ARPA money that we allocate, this board has allocated, what she said earlier was this Superior Court has to approve the judge, the part-time judges that she wants to bring in to help out. The money, has the money already been given to her? So she has the money. She has to do the hiring process before they can start attacking these cases.
Okay, what I'm talking about does not involve judges. It involves workers like Joy that can go in and help and all. I think we've volunteered a little assistance, yes.
So yes, I've hired administrative staff.
Right.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Board. Judge Wright Hill is correct about the disposessory process. What we're doing to try to alleviate some of the backlog, we've got additional license. So the neighborly software that we have, the disposessory process handled on the magistrate court side versus what's happening through Hartz to Nurish Hope, the backlog or what we're having, the logjam, has a lot to do with having enough license for individuals to get to the applicants within a timely manner. We've now acquired 10 additional licenses. We will be providing those licenses to other individuals, so therefore we can now respond to the citizens a little more expeditiously.
Okay, will that be 10 other folk already employed by the county, or will we bring in part-time people?
We would do a combination of both. We will utilize staff that's already in place. Of course, Commissioner Hamburg has looked at having Tina serve as a role to serve as a gatekeeper, so we'll provide her license. And we also look at using the Office of Performance Management, and then we're looking at bringing in part-time staff as well.
When can we do that? When?
Well, the licenses should be in no later than Monday of next week. It's just a now matter of finding additional funding source to bring in those part-time staff members. And I'll talk to CFO as it pertains to ARPA money to help with that.
Okay, so that's not coming from the feds, from the federal government?
ARPA money is the Fed money.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Mr. Franklin.
First, I want to say thank you to the COO and to Judge for providing that clarity, that information. And I just want to start there first on the funding. I know that we did award additional funding already, and we created that category for even the additional ARPA funding, so you got CARESAC funding and ARPA. And I hear that the holdup is with Hartz to Nurish Hope, so maybe I'm not quite understanding, where does the African Children's Fund play a role in this process?
Okay, so let me explain. If a tenant comes, goes online to neighborly and fills out the application, we have to have someone that has a license to be able to assign that case. If they have a pending eviction, it's assigned to African Children's Fund. If they're just behind in rent, three, four months behind, but the landlord has not filed eviction, then it goes to Hartz to Nurish. Again, the African Children's Fund, who works with the magistrate court, we distribute and disburse checks every week. Every Monday and every Wednesday, the tenants come in at 10, the landlords come at 1, sign my settlement agreement, and we give them a check. But if, a lot of, a lot of the people that we are writing checks to are because the landlords have waited so long and Hartz to Nurish has not issued those funds. So it's giving us double work. But African Children's Fund is doing what they're supposed to be doing, and doing it in a timely manner.
My question is not so much as are they doing what they're doing? I'm trying to have a clear understanding. So is African Children's Fund only processing the applications for the ones that you said three to four weeks? If you could just go over that one more time.
Okay.
From all of that.
Okay, so Hartz to Nurish is, they are distributing checks to landlords if the landlord has not filed an eviction. In order for African Children's Fund to issue a check, there's gotta be a case number that shows that the landlord has filed in the magistrate court, because in essence, after I get that settlement agreement, I'm dismissing the eviction. So that's where African Children's Fund comes in.
I'm clear, that's all, I'm totally clear on that now. I do need to add, in fact, today I took a call from two very desperate citizens, and I got a couple of more emails, about citizens saying that they're not even getting in contact with people, and they're not getting a return call back. I believe there's a great opportunity for us to possibly even partner with, I think it's the homeless liaison for Clayton County Public Schools, because I think that's probably one of our areas we really need to make sure that we reach first and foremost, because that means that there are kids who are dealing with a homeless or possible homeless situation. So maybe that will allow for us to be a little bit more efficient and effective on that end. But let me just move away from that, if you don't mind. Judge, I would like to get back into the information you provided about being the fourth busiest. And I'm looking at this, and thank Mr. Chairman for that question about population. Because as I did just a little quick math here, looking at Cobb County, Cobb County has a population of 766,000, and so we can round it on up to about 770. And we're looking at DeKalb, DeKalb is looking at about roughly the same amount of population maybe that gone up. Of course, as we know, Fulton, they're right at that, right under the 2 million mark, and then Gwinnett has increased to like 1.5. And that's based upon the census information that I was able to pull most recent. Now, when you look at that particular map, understanding, I understand that we're busy, and we understand that we're backlogged, and that's what ARPA funds for, to help with getting that speed and going. But when we're talking about adding judges full-time, full-time, I believe it's imperative, as Mr. Chairman even stated, that we look at the populations. So looking at the 20 judges in Cobb, that will give you 38,000 citizens per judge. You're looking at DeKalb, I mean, well, Cobb and DeKalb, that's 38,000 citizens per judge. Fulton County, that's 65,000 citizens per judge. So what you're recommending to our court on a permanent, sustainable basis will bring us to 15,000 citizens per judge. So I think that what we have here is- So I think that what we have here is we need to look at it in two separate buckets. What do you all need, or what do you need to be able to get the backlog up and going? We know that things are going to always be different, but right now we've got a little crunch. What do we need in terms of making a decision for right now? And then what do we need to do in terms of sustainability? And that sustainability will still be based upon the population.
I think before we can address that issue, we need to see what Superior Court is going to do in response to my proposal.
And then again, I'm sorry.
I said, I think before we can make that determination, we have to wait to see what Superior Court is going to, how they're going to respond to my proposal.
But your proposal, okay, let me make sure I'm clear now. I know that you're asking for that, and we want to hear how you're going to respond. But what you're sharing with us is information that helps us understand the basis of your proposal. And so that's why it's imperative that we look at the ratio of citizens versus the judges. And again, that's going to be to where we're going to basically have two and a half times the number of judges that even, uh, Cobb and DeKalb may have. Uh, two and a half times judges per population, when they have a much greater population than us.
Well, I haven't, I haven't put a number as far as a request for full-time. That's why I said, that's why I said I'd need to wait and see, we need to wait and see what Superior Court, how they're going to respond, because I have monies now for part-time staff. Budget, as far as my budget and as far as the ARPA funds.
Okay.
But I wanted to let the county know and the commissioners know where we are and as far as I am with the proposal. Hopefully, they will grant the proposal, um, and we can get those twelve part-time judges.
Well, my other question, so that means again, we did a little bit different things. You're asking for permanent judges, not judges to come in and help with the backlog. You're asking to bring on these additional judges full-time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'm clear. Thank you so very much.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Judge Hill, for what you do and what you have to continue to do. Um, let me ask this question. As far as the airport goes, when they're arrested at the airport, those residents, are you processing them as well?
Every arrest at the airport is handled by Clayton County Court.
Correct, so in a sense, that will be taken from, I mean, the airport technically is in Fulton County.
No.
Well, technically, from what they do. Exactly, I understand that. But for, if they're getting arrested anywhere, they're coming where?
Clayton County.
Unless they're written on a city ordinance, then they go to the city.
Correct.
So those numbers would also be put into here as well.
Correct.
But do you receive anything from the airport as far as funding for arrests there for processing?
I don't believe so.
Zero. I can answer that for you, zero.
Exactly, exactly. So, I, I mean, I understand where we're going with the population, and also that even the caseload per judges. Because I, from just looking at this, you're over ten thousand cases per judge. If these judges were approved, where would they be housed? Do we have enough space to begin to house them?
Right now, we're virtually, we're, the part-time judges, their majority, their, their primary function is to work nights, weekends, holidays. The part-time judges are the ones that's doing a lot of the warrants. So they have a county cell phone, they have a laptop, and so they're doing the warrants. So we don't need housing. We need laptops, computers, and money.
They can do it virtually.
Okay, so they pretty much work virtually. That's, okay, that's good to know. When was the last time Superior Court has approved any judges for Clayton County? Or for magistrate court, I'm sorry?
It's been a while. I know that, um, when I first got in office, there were four, there were four part-time judges. And they gave me one. They threw me a bone, they gave me one. So I had five, um, full-time, five, um, uh, part-time judges and four full-time, including myself. They did grant, they did allow me to have a full-time judge. They said I could have a fifth full-time judge, which is great. But I said, but I don't have the funding because we're in the middle, you know, we already have our budget approved. So they just granted that like last month. You can have another full-time judge. Great, but I don't have any funding for that as of today.
Yeah, so that, I'm sorry, I got to answer that question, though. I got to answer that question before I forget. So my question is simply, how can they grant you a position that's not funded? That's a mute point. So you keep saying that they can grant you, the B O C is the only ones can increase your budget to allow for a position to be created, to be added to your staff.
Right, so we have to go.
You're kind of losing me when you keep saying that.
I mean, per the statute, they approve the number of judges, and they have to approve my judge. So I could submit someone and they could reject them, but, um, they, if they say it's five, they, I can have five judges or five, however, the full-time, the part-time, they have to approve that. And I had been going to them saying, you know, all this backlog. They just out of the blue said, well, you know, we're going to, we approve you for a full-time judge. And I said, no, I didn't. So I got the approval from them, but I still don't have the money from the county.
So to accommodate for that judge, you would have to release some of your part-time people to make room to pay that salary for.
Or I, I, or I couldn't, I couldn't treat that person as a, as a full-time.
Where does the state come in when it comes to, uh, salaries or funding for judges?
That's a good question. Um, the only, um, the county provides our, our, our salaries as far as full-time for magistrate court.
Can you help us on that? Because I'm thinking that somewhere the state comes in with a partial or something, maybe we can hear it now.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, the state provides funding for the, um, Superior Court judges. They pay their salary, we pay a supplement. They don't provide any funding for the magistrate court judges. The county is responsible for paying for them. And then the state court judges, um, we, we pay them as well.
Okay, now if the Superior Court judges were to get a raise or whatever, does that filter down to the magistrate?
Not at this time, no, ma'am.
Okay.
They're not tied.
They're not tied to it anymore.
Does it go down to the state or?
The state court judges, we remove them. We untied everybody from, no, I think the state court judges still are a percentage of theirs. The state court judges is still a percentage of theirs.
Okay, but not the magistrate.
But not the magistrate court judges, no, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, go ahead.
Is there an optimal number of judges per population or judges per caseload?
I would have to, I would have to bring that back to, to, to the board and look at that. Um, I've just been in office ten months, so I've been trying to put out as many fires as I can. So I don't have that number.
And that's truly something we can talk about during budget time, as the budget approaches.
But I will say, while I'm up here, um, magistrate court is the only, my understanding, um, the chief judge position is not tied to Superior Court. Even though we do all this work, so I'm just putting that out there. Um, I, I believe it should be, because as you can see, every other court is Monday through Friday, nine to five. But we're the court that gets calls at three o'clock from officers. That is necessary. But we're the ones getting woken up, you know, awakened. So we do a lot, and while I take nothing away from, um, state and Superior Court, and Superior Court does handle more serious cases as far as homicide trials and aggravated assault, we handle more volume.
Is that something our delegation can look into?
That's something that I have proposed to them recently.
She's spoken to him.
Okay.
So, yes. Are they moving forward?
Forward, okay.
Yes.
In this session coming up?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, and I want to thank you for all you do. And I definitely think you need the twelve part-time judges. Um, as we look at the other counties, how are their judges, are they full-time or are they part-time?
The numbers that I put are a combination.
A combination?
Yeah.
So, so they have, so let's say for a county such as Fulton, how many full-time judges would they have?
I think, let's see, I just got a, a email, but I think they have maybe five?
Five, okay.
And see, if you have, if you have sufficient part-time.
You can.
You can kind of balance it. But the issue is, I have four, four part-time, and you can only go so many hours on part-time. And then if somebody, because we've had to deal with deaths and emergencies and accidents, and anything can happen, if you have one person per week and someone calls in, you have an issue, because our cases are of urgent nature. So it just helps to have a pool. If I can't get this person, at least I have other people to go to. So the more, but I'm, again, and I submitted to them, we have the funding. I just need them to approve the part-time. I don't see why they should not.
Okay.
Um, but that would definitely alleviate our need for as many full-time.
Okay.
And you provided them a list of names already?
I need their number first, but I already have a list. I have to get the approval, and then I'll submit the names to them.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, um, for a plan of clarity, I want to make sure. Once presented to us, and this presentation is still up, with the number of judges, it just says total number of magistrate, um, judges. So, can, can you break down part-time versus full-time for each of those counties?
No, I don't have that, no.
Give it back to us.
I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, Madam Chief Judge, we appreciate your presentation, very informative. And I'm sure we'll continue this dialogue as we go along, moving towards budget time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to Terra Boulevard sidewalk and lighting project, Mr. Jeff Matarko.
Good evening. We're here to, tonight to talk about a potential project we can apply for, some funding for. Um, as you all know, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about what Georgia DOT is doing on, or is talking about doing on Terra Boulevard to address some of the safety aspects of the roadway, specifically pedestrians and lighting. Um, they came on, back in late July, a work session, and presented a lot of projects that are in the works, um, a lot of data about accidents and fatalities, and where they are trying to go forward. Excuse me. We had a follow-up with their staff in early October at our staff level, and talked through their status of where they stood, and what are their initiatives they can go forward with sooner than later. Um, some of the information they provided us, um, I've kind of put some summary on here and justification for, um, why this, this project or these improvements on Terra Boulevard are needed. Um, I'm not going to read through any of this stuff, but there's been a lot of activity out there. Um, the construction projects in the, in the past history, the county actually installed some sidewalk on Terra Boulevard, um, five or six years ago. Um, and Georgia DOT recently did a minor project to add some refuge islands to help some of the pedestrian crossings. But one of the things that came out from some of the studies they, they've done, they've come out and said that, um, Terra Boulevard is, ranks first of all roadway segments in the state for crash severity for what they consider dark, not lighted conditions. They have different timeframes of the day, they look at things. So they're, they, they basically are saying there is a problem out there in the dark conditions about all the number of accidents, and they're working on solutions of how to move forward. So, uh, part of the ongoing discussions, um, is how to get lighting on this road. Um, you know, they, they presented some information, the chairman's penned a letter to Georgia DOT showing them our support. There's been a lot of discussions, as you all know, with our elected officials, um, with the board members from Georgia DOT, trying to get something off the ground. Um, one of the aspects when we met with their staff was, would the county be interested in trying to go forward with a, what we call a TIP, a, um, Transportation Improvement Program project through the A R C and garner some federal money to try to jumpstart some of these projects. Um, they have a lot of things in the hopper, and I'll, later in the presentation, I'll tell you, I'll give you an update on what I discussed with them today. But what we're, we looked at is, um, basically throw everything in the kitchen sink at it from Upper Riverdale down through the extents down to Henry County line. Um, talking about sidewalk on both sides of the street, upgrading the ADA pedestrian ramps for it, and installing street lighting and pedestrian lighting. And there's a difference in, in the lighting, the purpose behind it. Um, just a quick and dirty, um, a street light is twenty-five, thirty feet up in the air, um, a hundred, a hundred and fifty foot spacing. Uh, pedestrian lighting is something we don't really have in this county. Um, there are shorter light poles, about fifteen feet tall. Um, they're spaced forty, sixty feet apart, um, depending on what, how many driveways you have in the area. But the purpose behind them are markedly different. Um, so keep that in mind as we go forward with this. Um, but we, we've scoped a, like I said, kind of like the whole kitchen sink into a potential, um, project that we could go after. And it, it's scalable on scope and distances and things like that. Here's a slide, it kind of tells you what we're looking at right now. Um, we've, we've divided the, the area up into certain districts or certain limits, mainly because it goes through the city of Jonesboro and the city of Lovejoy. So there's a, there's a partnership here that will have to be discussed about who does what and the roles, um, obviously, because, I mean, we go through the cities. And, um, most prominently, we have a service delivery agreement with the cities on who delivers services in their jurisdictions. Um, but we have an opportunity, um, I'll explain it here in a couple of minutes about some funding. Um, one note on here, I kind of drew a box in a segment area. That's Georgia DOT's current widening project on Terra Boulevard. That does include a, um, ten-foot path on one side of the road, on the west side, and a five-foot sidewalk on the east side of the road. So I wanted to kind of separate that out when you start looking at the, um, the areas where we put, where the existing sidewalk is, um, what is planned, which is under construction, and what we're proposing as a need. And you can see on the side, um, the needs are considerable, ten miles of sidewalk. And of course, that's both sides of the road, so linear foot, linear, it's double the length of the road itself. A planning level estimate we've thrown at the project, as you can see, is quite expensive, seventeen and a half million dollars. Um, if we would be looking at, um, funding now a hundred percent on our pennies and dimes and dollars, um, that's what we would be looking at. Um, obviously, we've broken it down by the three major components. Um, so you can see the magnitude of costs, six-foot wide sidewalk, um, both sides of the street, street lighting and pedestrian lighting. And you can see the magnitude of how many lights we're talking about. I mean, thousands of light fixtures that would have to, um, be procured and installed. Um, we have engineering costs, inspection costs, and then we, um, put a placeholder in for a potential right-of-way acquisition. Um, everyone thinks Terra Boulevard is rather wide, but, um, you've heard me before say sometimes sidewalk, the easiest part is just putting concrete on the shoulder. But prepping the shoulder, we anticipate there's a lot of drainage improvements, um, that are going to be needed, some culverts that are going to have to be extended, some guard rail that's have to be relocated. Um, really, the final topping is the sidewalk instead of putting grass on the, on the shoulder. So, um, there, there's a quiet bit of effort that's going to go into it. It's not just, you know, going and pouring, uh, a concrete slab. Um, so that's the magnitude if we want to take the whole area of the total cost that you're looking at. Um, if we break it down by jurisdiction, of course, the most portion of it is in the unincorporated county. Uh, but this, this is all construction and everything, all the engineering involved in it. So this is total project cost. Um, you can see, City of Jonesbournes and City of Lovejoys, um, the portion kind of geographically prorated into their jurisdictions. All right, here's the opportunity we might have to go after some competitive federal dollars that are appropriated through the Federal Appropriations Act, and they come down through A R C. All transportation dollars come through A R C for the metropolitan area. Um, their surface transportation block grant funds is where they generate from. Um, the urgency is, they opened up a small window. They usually do this every couple of years when they are getting to the latter or middle stages of the TIP program, um, to move projects into the TIP from what they call the RTP. That's the Long Range Plan, which goes out to 2050. Or you have the opportunity to submit new projects into the, um, the current work program. So this is the opportunity we have. We have an application closing that we have to submit December second. I put a couple of things on there, obviously, the application is, um, rather lengthy, fifty-four pages. Um, that's something that, um, my staff, mainly Keith Rowland, our Assistant Director, is tackling right now. They evaluate these projects all different directions. They have a hundred and three, twenty-three-page document, how they score these projects, mobility, equity, safety, resiliency. Um, they go through a lot of grading criteria, trying to, um, I guess, normalize all the projects across the region and trying to get to the ones that give you the most bang for the buck and meet the region's goals. You can see at the bottom, typically, um, funding, when you go after federal funding, it's in what we call an eighty-twenty split, eight percent federal, twenty percent local. Um, Georgia DOT can come in and play the role of the local jurisdiction. So just keep that in mind as we're going forward. I put on the bottom too, that, um, we are currently looking in, and you might see it next week, as a couple of other TIP submittals, uh, for, to go after funding. We, we are looking at, we're putting one in for resurfacing, um, trying to garner more money into resurfacing that we will be doing anyways in the next couple of years. Then we have a traffic operation one that we're looking at, at some cybersecurity issues on our vast network of traffic signals that we have around the county. So you might be seeing that coming forward too. What we're looking at right now, and, and I'll interject where GDOT stands currently. The TIP program, right now, what they're asking for is only for the next couple of years. The next slide, we'll get into, um, some scheduling issues, um, or scheduling timeframes. But what we're looking at right now is the, what they call the preliminary engineering phase. Uh, we've estimated it, as you can see, at one point four million dollars. If we take, and that's total, so if we take the local match, then we divide it up jurisdictional-wise, you can see the investment we're looking at to kind of jump-start the project on a submittal. Um, this, this would not involve, at this point, what we're, what we're suggesting at this point is not involve, um, trying to get Georgia DOT to pay any of those funds. Showing that we are locally committed in our backyard on their right-of-way to start a project. Then we've put an asterisk there about leveraging the, um, the current conversations y'all are having with the various entities about, um, getting GDOT to come to the table and support and pay, pay the rest of the bill. Whether it's through federal funds or state funds, um, come to the table and fund the rest of it. But we will, um, of course, with your blessing, your approval, pony up the, the engineering funds to get this thing started. Obviously, local commitment in the evaluation criteria, ARC, both from the county and the cities will go a long way to show that it's a collaborative effort and that we're serious about this. Um, one caveat I'll put on the bottom, um, is any lighting projects, um, one of the big stickler points are the, um, the energy costs, the operations, and then the ongoing maintenance costs, uh, for any, um, you know, malfunctions of the lighting system. Um, this is common that we've, we've done with Georgia DOT on some other projects, and, um, in the, in the letter that the chairman sent on behalf of the interest, he alluded to that, um, this is something we're going to consider going forward, and we're open to the idea if that's what it takes to get this funding or get these lights and these facilities out there. Georgia DOT today, um, the update I got from them, and this might change some of where we need to go, because this is, uh, this is a, a live discussion. They are going after a, what they consider a quick-response project to get some street lighting up there. It's probably apples to oranges are what we're looking at, but they are looking at contracting with Georgia Power directly, and trying to give you an impression is, every, every pole or most of the utility poles are out there, putting a light fixture on theirs. Um, it wouldn't necessarily be a designed lighting for the corridor, and locations where you might not have a pole, you won't have a light necessarily. But the idea is, this is something they could do rather quickly, and it's something we can get some benefit from. So they are moving forward with that as, as quickly as they can. Um, the, the timeframe they gave me today is maybe in the summertime of next year, they actually might be in the installation phase of these lighting. So that obviously could affect what we are looking at from the street lighting perspective. We might want, if they really go to fruition on that, we might want to pare down our side of the street lighting and then come back and augment where they have dark areas or a prime location that might, that y'all can probably visualize is, um, next to the railroad track along, um, where Cardinal and, and that area, there's no, there's no poles on the railroad track side. So that would be something that maybe we put poles on that side of the road on this project to illuminate the whole roadway. And of course, they're not looking at pedestrian lighting, and they're not looking at sidewalk either right now. And so that would be, um, major components of, of this project, uh, moving forward to get those facilities out there. A couple of other items that they brought to the table with y'all, they, they call them PHBs, pedestrian hybrid beacons. Those are your quasi-traffic signal flashers that stop traffic so you can cross traffic in a mid-block area. Uh, we have one in the county that we installed a couple of years ago, go on Mount Zion Parkway, um, near the Board Education Facility in, in Mount Zion, um, High School. They're talking about certain locations on theirs on Terra Boulevard. They are trying to move forward with theirs. They are up against some funding limits, is what I understand, but they are hopeful they might have a couple of theirs, um, installed next summer too. Um, I don't have specific locations to divulge to you right now, but they are working on some of the locations. Some more are more extensive construction, and it gets outside their funding limits, and they have to go a different direction. So there actually might be a, uh, opportunity to incorporate some of theirs into this project, um, depending on timeframes and how this gets, um, if this goes further and gets approved by ARC. But Georgia DOT is actively working, and it sounds promising, on some sort of lighting out there, which, right now, something's better than nothing, um, of what we have. So. Proposed project schedule. It takes a while, that's, that's the best summary I can give you. I, I can tell you stories about going through the, the Georgia DOT and the federal process on projects. It just takes a long time. This is rather short, in scope of it. The big kicker here is, I want to show you that, right now, we're looking at a 2026, um, construction. That's the reason why you don't see me recommending anything on the construction funding to go into the TIP, because they're not submitting funding only through 2025. So with 2026, it's not something to submit at this point. We would have to go back to Georgia DOT or ARC in the next couple of years and, um, you know, twist arms and, and make our case again to move the construction up into the, the TIP program. Which is a normal routine. They've had calls for this nature every couple of years. They had one in 2019, they had one in 2017 too. And we've been successful at both of those situations, um, garnering some federal money, um, to do some projects. Nothing quite at this size yet, but I'm not saying it can't be done. So this is the proposed time schedule right now. Um, one, one thing I, I will say, um, this gets back into some of the funding and what we might decide going forward, is looking at the historical, um, awards that ARC has been willing to support in the nineteen and the seventeen TIP update, where they, um, received additional projects. Most of the awards capped out around seven, eight, nine million dollars. That was kind of the high end of stuff. So, um, when you look at this project, um, seventeen and a half million, if you take eighty percent, I mean, that's roughly fourteen million. So I don't know if that's cost prohibitive on what they're looking for. So it might be a discussion that, um, maybe we phase this project. We do a Phase A, a Phase B, the northern section or the southern section, and try to stage it, it might be more palatable. And I say that with the caveat that a big component of this is when we get to construction, how much money is Georgia DOT going to come to the table? Because they could pay for all of it, um, if they have the money, or they can come through, forward and, and pay for whatever the federal funds won't, um, go for. Um, so it's purely the, the pleasure of, um, how we want to attack this beast of trying to get a project started. And if we, we feel more confident putting the whole thing in and seeing how it plays out with ARC through various discussions, or if we want to put two or three projects in, in hopes of trying to get the most critical section funded up, up front, and then fight the rest of the battle, um, at a later date. So in summary, um, next steps, since this is kind of a critical stage to get our application in at the start of next month, um, we do need to finalize the scope of what's included and the limits of it. Basically, are we doing one big project, or are we doing a couple of smaller projects? And, um, how robust do we want to make this? Uh, like I said, it's planned right now, or scoped as a six-foot sidewalk, pedestrian lighting and street lighting. Uh, CEO Stanford and I did speak with representatives of the cities today, um, to garner their interest, because right now, through service delivery, um, agreement, they would have to, um, be a partner with us. And I think there's genuine interest in that accord. They, they see the value of this project, they see the need for this project. So I, I don't think that's going to be something prohibitive of us going forward. It's, it's just kind of working out the details. Enough initially to get them to pass a resolution too, that we would need from this body to move forward in December, and then, then obviously, um, the funding won't be needed till fiscal year twenty-three. So there's some time there for them to plan. And, and for reference, from the engineering side, we were looking at, in the fifty thousand dollars on their value. So, um, I don't think it's not anything that can be obtained. Um, then last but not least is, um, continuing our efforts to secure the funding that's needed, the, the, the big pot of funding that's needed from Georgia DOT to, to bring this project to fruition. Not to overuse the phrase, but, um, us putting skin in the game up front to get this thing designed, I think will go a long way to, um, kind of, you know, making sure that they come forward with what they need to do on their road to make the, the safe for our citizens. So. I know that's a lot of information I threw at you. Um, sorry I went over my five minutes, Mr. Chairman, but, um...
Blew that out of the water. But it was very informative, and I appreciate, uh, the information in the presentation. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Matarco?
Yes, I do.
All right, Commissioner Franklin.
Oh, I need to wait, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
All right, first, I got to tell you, Jeff Matarco, thank you for the work that you're doing on this project. It's definitely needed, and, um, you all are working hard at home. And before I even begin, I have some good news to share, as I stated earlier, from DC. And I just finished a meeting earlier today with, um, Liz Howden on the, um, Transportation Committee. And, uh, we heard directly from our folks from NACO that we're anticipating that President Biden is getting ready to sign the Transportation Act that is huge. So that will be an opportunity for us to unlock additional funding. We don't have any additional information on the timeframe, or when the bus will be released at this time, and what will be the, um, the actual, uh, hold requirements, as you know, with PERS Act, it kind of changed. However, with our folks that we work with directly through NACO, they have committed to getting back with us as soon as that bill is signed to make sure that, uh, we get all the information we need, and then on top of it, that it worked through anything that needs to be looked at, uh, again. Also, I want to share with you, um, there's another upcoming transportation deal that is coming forth that will help us within this timeframe. Uh, and it's unlocking some of the CBG funding, and also it's a, uh, ARPA Infrastructure Flexibility Bill. As we know, the ARPA funding has specific, um, requirements around it for use, and I'm hearing that that actually is definitely a bipartisan effort and is very promising. So I'm so excited about that and about the work we're doing. Another thing I want to tell you is, I did double-check and made sure that we can get a little help to get through that, uh, application. I've already spoken to, um, oh gosh, Mike Alexander, and I also spoke with our folks at the ATL. There are opportunities to, um, to, as you stated, to help us ramp up through this process a little bit more. And, um, Jonathan Rabinow, as well as Kane, who used to work with ARC, they are waiting to work with us through this process. So you all have done the heavy lifting, and, uh, hopefully you can give them a call so that, um, we can make those connections as we continue to, um, get this worked out. And I think that once the board is able to approve at least a twenty percent match, according to what I'm looking at, uh, whether it has to be phased and done in phases, no matter what, but it seems like we should be able to secure, um, that fourteen million that it's going to take to get this, um, done. And then the last thing I want to say, I know recently, uh, we went over to, um, a length trip and, um, and study in Chicago. And one of the things I noticed this week is Chicago was asking for some help in a certain area. And the president was specific on saying, go back and look at the ARPA funding for usage. So I think Jonathan and Kane would be extremely useful for us as we work through this process with GDOT. I can't thank you enough for your efforts.
Any other questions? Commissioner Habbert?
Really not a question, and you've answered several of the things that I was going to mention. So I, I'm thinking that this application process only involves the project for nineteen forty-one, right? Highway nineteen forty-one.
It, it's any project that we want to submit to the, the TIP. I mean, definitely what we're speaking of tonight, it would be, if we do one project, it'll be one application. If we do phasing, it's technically two projects, it'll be two applications. And then, what I mentioned about the resurfacing and the traffic operations, those would be separate projects too, all requiring separate resolutions of support. The sidebar and the resurfacing and the traffic operations, we were going to be doing those anyways. Our SPOSS money, we're just trying to get some more money to help defray some of the cost. Um, this is, this is definitely a reach, and it's outside anything we, we scoped or even dreamed about with, um, SPOSS funding. The total, the total cost, obviously.
But we'll include, okay. And you were saying something about, uh, GDOT, and you were looking at me, and I'm thinking, you know exactly what I'm thinking. The times that we've met with them, and, and I must say, they have worked with us and still working with us on Conley Road and all, but, you know, they are quick to say that this is a county road, or you all are responsible. But when it's a state highway, why is it that we have to bear the responsibility of, of doing, you know, the work and all? And I understand what you're saying about, let's work together, and I agree. But, you know, they, they would bring that up, and you know, we've been in several meetings, and that has come up, so...
The, the technical answer is we don't. I mean, there's been times before in, in the past, the county has said, that's your road. You have a responsibility to provide the services and the facilities out there. We could definitely say that. I think they like to see partnership, they like to see local input into the matter. Sometimes the input is skin in the game. Yeah, at this point, the engineering is, is, I mean, I don't want to say any cost is low, but it's, it's, it's attainable and what we can afford right now. And getting the fruit in the future by however means we get there, this is a necessary step. And not, not to back them into a corner, if we say we're doing this and we produce a set of plans for them, um, they need to go ahead and fund it. I mean...
Thank you, that's what I say too. Now, who will be responsible for doing the work? Will it be the county, or will, will we hire out, or will it be GDOT?
Oh, this is beyond our capacity. We would, we would hire a consultant. The, the way this will work is, we will be the owner of the project, the sponsor, to start the engineering aspect of it. When it shifts, we will definitely try to get GDOT to take the lead in it. Whether or not they will or not, it remains to be seen. That's in the construction phase. I mean, first and foremost, we would want them to commit to the funding. And if we have to manage the project, uh, by hiring, like I said, the consultant, the, the contractors and stuff like that, then that's something we can handle in our, in TND.
And I see that.
Hold on a second, Commissioner Hambert wasn't finished, go ahead.
And I see that the date and all does stretch a couple of years or whatever. And perhaps this infra- infrastructure bill that was just passed may be of help to us also.
The the infrastructure bill could could make some of the funding directly appropriated to this. The the infrastructure bills have to go through A R C. They that that's the way everything goes through NPO. It has to be, you know, done up in the tip and the RTP, that's the process. The the bill is just a funding mechanism. Then you have appropriations and obligations, I mean, it it's a process. But it's promising that they're at least talking about other potential dollars coming into it. That's the funding side. Now, the reality that, I mean, I've lost hair and got gray here with is is going through the GDOT process and all the hoops and stuff you have to go through. If 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 we had the money, we could do this, we could probably do it in half the time. But going through the process, all the approvals, and all the projects they have to deal with statewide, it just takes a while. The estimate we put together on the schedule, I've got my fingers crossed, we can deliver it. Track records on things like this, when you're when you're doing, things tend to go longer. I think this is attainable with with some some diligence at this point, but it it's a long process.
Okay, and this is something, not only for this project, but for other things, especially with the lights and all throughout. I have noticed a problem with the lights and the trees. You know, I know you mentioned the the kind of lights and all, and I love those lights on Godbe Road that they have in College Park for pedestrian walkway or whatever. But the higher the lights get for just regular traffic and all that, sometimes you can't see them because the trees have them covered. And you think, you know, well, we don't have any streetlights, but yes, we do. But you can't see them for the tree. Is there something prohibiting the trimming of those trees around the lights?
Staff, resources.
Well, I mean, I know I notice it on the interstates though, so it's more.
I mean, some of the stuff on the interstates, GDOT's going to be more proactive because you got safety issues on trees falling on the road in a safety zone. It's not so much about making the streetlights visible. On the lower roads, the arterias, collectors, and we have it, we have the battle all the time in our residential areas.
I was going to give you a list.
And we just hate to go trim someone's trees. I mean, we tried to get them to take ownership of it, but that that's, trees grow. It it's a constant battle, but I mean, it the long answer to to your question is, I mean, it's resources, if that's where we want to allocate resources to trim away from these streetlights, that's that's definitely something we can talk, discuss more.
Well, I think we, you know, let's talk it sometime because to me, it it takes away the fact that the streetlights are there because you still can't see if the trees are, you know, blocking all the lights. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, I just want to tie in real quick and make sure that I'm specific on my item. When we're talking about the funding and the timeframe, this is definitely a very progressive timeframe with all factors given at this moment. But one of the things that we know is that because this is a issue that is a safety issue, it will allow for us to work through that process, hopefully a little bit faster through GDOT. At least that's been the conversations, I believe, that you would have had with Paul Denard, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The other thing I want to make sure that I bring clarity to, and this will be helpful, I'm going to put my NTO head off for two seconds. The reason that Henry County was able to work through their T-SPOSS process as quick as they did is because they took advantage of the resources available through the Atlanta Transit Link Authority. And a lot of times, we think of transit as just buses and so forth. But as we know, those, we actually have on staff, the engineers there, we have those that are versed in making sure that the funding is there for us to be able to get through this project. So I just want to be specific on my statement earlier. Kane is actually one that worked with A R C, he's one of our planners, as well as Jonathan, and they've been ready and willing to work with us. And they've actually helped other counties to get through processes quicker. Another pocket I just want us to consider tapping into, and of course, they'll be able to help you through that when you all get together as a team, and I'm hearing from our COO that y'all have already began that journey of the relationship. But one of the things I want us to keep in mind is when it comes to this work that we're doing, there is a part that Marta also can play. So there, I stated it must before, up in one of the northern quadrants, it was submitted for additional funding for ADA sidewalks. So that's something that we can tap into. So just as I conclude, that is the benefit of bringing in the ATL to be able to help us through it. So it's not just a heavy load on our staff, and they can continue to work through the process to get it done swiftly and need no funding on the table. If that helps.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Mr. Matarco, thank you. One other statement, I'm so sorry, because y'all know this is my my passion. So to Commissioner Hambert's point, with the funding that we've now found out is available and what's anticipated to go through that on on Monday, we decide into into action, but also the upcoming deals, they will allow us as we move through this to go ahead and get those other projects through as well. And again, once we lay the groundwork for this project, then you can look at the other roads and the other state roads. And remember, that state funding is not just for the state roads, and the funding coming from the federal government can be used on roads in our various districts. So let's just keep this ball rolling and keep the folks at the table so that we can all keep our citizens safe and be proud of our districts and.
Ms. Matarco, thank you for your presentation, and we are excited about the direction we're going into. So let's get it done as it as we all can agree up here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last presentation is going to be, oh, it helps to put on glasses. Will be a discussion on an intergovernmental agreement with the Development Authority, and presentation will be given to us by Mr. Reed, I believe.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Board. For the next hour or so, I'll kind of go.
The next what?
No, actually, in seriousness, I really don't plan on doing much talking at all. Really, I want to, it's, I want to present some information to you and get some feedback from you all as it relates to this intergovernmental agreement. And we can see where you would have us to go. So as the GIS map is pulled up here, as you recall, back in 2019, the board amended the Mountain View overlay and created the INDP zoning classification and re- and rezoned certain parcels up near the Gilbert Road area to INDP. We are now moving closer to having a intergovernmental agreement to get a road improvement portion of the, of the. Sorry. All right, so. I want to show you where we're talking about this for sake of of context. So the INDP portion that's shown up here on the on the map, Gilbert Road, of course, comes down through what is contemplated with this intergovernmental agreement, that the development of the INDP parcels will include some ancillary road improvements to help facilitate the use of that property. As you see down, I guess, on the southern part, past that little triangle where it says INDP, I'll try to put the mouse there, you see there's a few parts that say MV, M U R. So at that part of the road, south of Conley Circle, is this area right here. The board, as part of its Mountain View overlay, required that utilities next to the road be placed underground. So for the road work that is in this area here, the question is whether the board, so let me actually, let me back up a little bit. So what is contemplated by this intergovernmental agreement is that the road improvements would be done by the developer, and at the conclusion of the project, they would transfer those road improvements to the county, and the county would then take ownership of the entire road, including the right-of-way changes and improvements to the to the road. So as part of their construction, I just need to know from the board, do you all want to require the developer to place the utilities and such underground in the area that's part of the overlay? If that is the case, then that will increase the cost of doing the road improvements beyond that amount that's been budgeted. If we do not, then we can work out getting a variance to, or they would apply for a variance, to get the road improvements done without having to comply with that portion of the Mountain View overlay. So just wanted to get some feedback from the board as your thoughts on that issue.
Commissioner Hambert?
Okay. We approved something a couple months ago about an industrial parkway. Did that include Gilbert Road or?
Oh, so the, so the the big overview plan you're talking about that we approved last? So that was the overall development of the Mountain View. This portion here is just a portion of what was approved as part of that whole concept plan last week.
So now, do we own this, or is it owned by those owners of those different properties?
The portion that's of the IDP is owned by private individuals.
And we are responsible for doing the underground?
So the portion of the INDP that's on that map there is owned by private individuals, they want to develop that. Part of the process would be them improving that road, Gilbert Road, going all the way down past Conley Circle to Conley Road. The portion that is part near the INDP is not so much of an issue. It's that portion that is south of the parcel that say INDP that has the MV, M U R zoning classifications, that falls within the board's Mountain View overlay district. So when they're doing improvements, as a policy, this board has said that when anyone's doing improvements on the road, the utilities have to go underground. Because the county is providing funding towards the road improvements, if we required that of them, it would increase the cost that the county would have for to put towards the road improvements. But that's not a call that staff really can make because it's a policy of this board that that's what you wanted to see in that, see in that area.
Okay, so now, what is this intergovernmental agreement saying?
Well, the intergovernmental agreement is silent. So before we bring it back to you all for for approval, we want to know, do you want then the utilities underground? Do you want them above? And then we can write that into the agreement so that it it contemplates or includes what it is that you all want to see from your perspective.
Does that mean we're paying for that, for that extra cost?
If it goes underground, then quite yes. Or, I shouldn't say yes, there is, it will be an increased cost. Now, what you decide to do with that is up to the board. They aren't going to want to eat that cost. So.
What's the budget for it now?
The budget right now is 6.1 million for the entire road improvements.
Would be increased by how much?
Barry might be able to speak to that.
Commissioners, good evening. Those numbers are not available yet because they didn't have time to actually go work on them. And when, as we work through the process, be frankly, the the whole overlay concept never came up. And that's just being dirt honest about it. We work with the county, our county counterparts, and all we work and looked at is just getting this, getting this part of a $75 million project done because we all know that this road is a, is the, that's the trigger for the rest of that Mountain View area. So we just need, if we got to go back, if we can't get a variance, then we just have to go back and work those numbers up and bring them back to you.
Personally, I'd like to see those numbers. And also as well, I know there's some conversation with the state on underground utilities and who's going to be responsible for them here in the future. I don't know, Mr. Matarco, if you can speak to that. But I know ACCG is is, has brought that up at many of their meetings.
And as a 40-year Georgia Power man, that will continue to come up, and the cost causes typically pay for that.
We don't want to speak typically, I want to know.
Well, let me tell you, 100 out of 100% that I've worked on in 40 years, the cost causes paid for it.
But to his point, I would like to see what the numbers look like. It'd have to, it'd have to make sense for me.
Oh, absolutely.
As far as going beyond the, what, 6 million?
6.1, yes, sir.
So if we can get some of those numbers, I don't know how long it'll take to get those increased numbers.
Well, we, I I asked them to start working on it last week when we first heard about these items. And as I shared with Attorney Reed, there's no boogeyman in this process. Everything has always been around the INDP, and as we just working as hard and as fast as we can because, like I said, there's a $75 million project hanging in the balance, and the rest of that Mountain View area is hanging in the balance. And we were charged with trying to get it done, and that's all it was to, just a, but if this is what, these three items comes back to the BOC to approve, then staff couldn't.
And trust me, we want to see those projects come to fruition as well. But again, when we are talking about expending taxpayers' money, we've got to make sure that we are doing our due diligence on the front and make sure that the cost is justified the need.
Oh, absolutely. So that's why we either ask for the variance or we'll go back and apply and abide by the overview.
As soon as you can get us some increased numbers, as I'm hearing from the board, then we can, we can make a decision one way or the other.
Can I also say, not just that, the the difference with the with the lines being above ground versus underground, I mean, can you explain to us what what would the difference be and what would, you know, how would that, how can I say it, how would that help as far as, y'all understand what I'm asking?
Y'all already know the difference.
So, and I know the difference too, and so, of course, but I just want everybody to hear what, you know, what the difference is with them being above versus.
There is no hard, fast difference to tell you because you don't know what you're going to dig up when you start digging up the road out there. And whether you direct bury it or.
No, I'm saying, putting them in the ground though versus them being.
Aesthetically.
Yeah, aesthetically.
Well, it's going to look better to some people, but for me, I I thought they looked just fine the way they were. And I would, so, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And not just aesthetics, I mean, just, you know, thunderstorms, things of that nature, you know, not, I'm talking about Mother Nature, so.
It it will help for that particular area, yes, but because the rest of it is overhead, until you put it all underground, you still have some outages due to trees falling.
Trees falling, yeah.
Yes. No doubt about it.
Can we get something?
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Franklin.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can't see anybody else on here, so I can't see what people were talking, I apologize. First of all, Mr. Vincent, we know I have to give one of my officers to check your driver's license, I'm a 40 years with Georgia Power, I don't believe. But at any rate, we don't want to come from there. I have a question, because I've met with, oh, God, come on with the, with Eretropus. Was there an opportunity, or is there an opportunity for us to partner with them on possibly getting some additional funding so that we can go ahead and get it done, so that we can see some progress in this area? Or did we miss that opportunity?
I am not aware of any opportunities with Eretropus to get anything done out here. I think Mr. Matarco had a great example when you started. Um, I think Mr. Matarco had a great example. When you start dealing with federal money, trying to get those dollars, you gotta be ready for the, it's a long, it's a long game. It could be a couple of years to never. And, um, once again, we had everything in place, ready to go. We came up to these last three items that we definitely have to bring back to the Board of Commissioners to, to rule on, so.
I didn't say that. So my next question may not be a, a quick answer, but is there any way that we can look into using some of our ARPA funding so that we can meet that difference? Because one of the things, again, that's been stressed up here on Capitol Hill is using funding for legacy projects. And see, once this project is done, um, and let me go back. I thank Commissioner, um, Dr. Anderson for her question because it, it's important for us to understand the difference. So we want this project to move forward, um, because it's gonna benefit our county. But one of the things that we're talking about here on the hill is a legacy project and being able to use that ARPA funding for that. I would, um, urge us to take a look at that, especially as they release some of the, um, stringent, um, requirements around it. There may be opportunity there. And that's not something we have to wait for forever on. Uh, there are states who have already started spending money.
Something we'll take a look at, whether that, those funds can be, can be utilized for that or not. Uh, Commissioner Hamburg.
How did you know?
Guys, I heard, I heard you get it.
We heard you.
Please, let's do something and get that back because Gilbert Road, Mountain View, you know, I keep hearing that over and over and it sounds like the same thing keeps coming back to us.
Well, we're, we're very close. And like I say, these items that came up, Attorney Reed was just doing his job, protecting everybody. These three issues only you all can, can, can address. And that's why we're here and, uh, a great, this project is good for the county, the citizens and the companies involved up there. We, like you, Commissioner Hamburg, it's long overdue. We want to see it done.
Yes, yes. So if you can get that back, I, we would appreciate it. Yes.
Yeah, we.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, before you all, uh, I ready to head out. Just had one other thing. Uh, the second issue is relating to lighting issues. Right now, there's not, there is a blank next to lighting. There's some, um, there's some, um, possible ways that we can, uh, get lighting in the area. If you want to have lighting, they have some costs based on how much capital we put up front versus if you put little, then it may be a higher cost. I believe the number that's been floated around is somewhere up to twenty-three thousand dollars a month. Is that right, Jeff? Approximately. We just need to know if that's something you're interested in and if so, then we can perhaps, um, make a recommendation on a, you know, on a funding source if, you know, if that's something that the board is interested in.
This may be a question for Mr. Matarco. Okay, if we do that, if we do that now or whatever, and then with all the other, uh, project improvements and, uh, construction and whatever, would, is it possible that that may be null and void? Um, you know, they may have to take it down or redo it or something?
I.
If it's not a part of the plan, you know, the plan that was presented to us? Cause I mean, it may be some lighting in that, I don't know. But I would love to have some kind of lighting up there.
I mean, the, the, the project was always scoped with lighting in it from the beginning. Um, the, the concept goes back to the C W Grant grade separation. The idea, and this goes back way to Grant Wayne Scott's days here, was to make the whole area look uniform.
Right.
Um, going into the airport, all the lights, um, that were installed apart of the C W Grant project by Georgia D R T were very intentional to match what, uh, Maynard Jackson has going into the airport. Um, so the idea was to continue the lighting onto this road.
Okay.
Um, of course, it comes with a cost and then how, how to fund it. The, the C W Grant project, um, thank you for Georgia D R T's delays on this. Um, they haven't turned the lighting over to us. We haven't started to pay any, the bills for the energy or maintenance on it. Um, that's coming and that was approved, I don't know, six, seven years ago by the board that you were taking on that expense. So that's really what you're talking about. In this scenario here, if the road project puts the lighting in, um, obviously you're gonna have to fund the energy and, and maintenance of it. Um, Georgia Power has provided the, um, the developer, who's gonna function as the project manager for Gilbert Road, a couple of different scenarios on how to do that. And like Attorney Reed said, um, a, a low capital cost upfront uh, would be a higher monthly cost Georgia Power is, is proposing or vice versa. It's really just the pleasure of the board. How do you want to fund it? Do you want to pay the capital higher or, or lower? Um, I, I think for the area and for the look and for the first project out there, I, um, from my side, I would be remiss not to have a streetlight, um, put in there and to set the stage, um, for the development y'all desperately want to see come out there. So, um, that's Jeff's two cents worth, but how to get there is what the dilemma is right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right.
Uh, there's nothing else. Uh, what we'll do is, uh, when we get some numbers, um, back from the developer, I'll present that to you all at some way. And so, um, this matter is on the agenda for the sixteenth. I doubt that we'll have something that we'll be able to present to you all to redress all these things for the sixteenth, so this may go to the meeting on the seventh of December. So we may have an opportunity to come back and bring this information to you at another work session prior to then, uh, to make sure you move forward.
I think there's interest in getting this done expeditiously, but making sure we're moving in a cautious and in the right direction. Uh, so as soon as you can get that information, please get it to us. Uh, Mr. Reed, you gave it a good try for an hour, but we appreciate the information and.
I can bring you some other stuff if you'd like.
No, we're good. We're good. We're good.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do have one question for Mr. Reed though. Speaking of I G As, has there been any traction on the I G A movement between the board and the Development Authority?
There will be. There will be.
Hopefully soon. Look forward to it.
Yes.
All right. Well, nothing else being for this board. We are adjourned.
I do, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
I just have a quick announcement, um, and I know that all the commissioners received an invite, but as you know, that this board voted to make sure that we have our very first, um, Black Box Theater, um, put in here in Plankton County and we're having a grand opening on November thirteenth. Um, the date was already set, even though many will be at A C C G. Uh, also want to let you know that, uh, those in the South Side, which again serves more than just one district, we have had our very first art showing there. There were over two hundred people present, uh, this past Saturday. And, uh, it was featuring artwork of none other than Dr. Yvette Crossing, um, who's a prominent doctor and artist, and it was sponsored by Marta. So I, um, definitely urge y'all to join us on November thirteenth at six P M for the grand opening of the Black Box Theater. And thank you so much. That's it.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank, thank you.